Welcome to your city commission study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at six P M. And midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. This is a study session. First up, update on the wastewater treatment plant condition assessment.
Brian Faust, the director of public works will handle this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As mentioned, the item this evening is an update on our wastewater treatment plant condition assessment. That is currently underway. Tonight, we have Charlie Seaver with H D R. As well as Tim and John from the plant to answer the tougher questions that we have tonight. At any time during our presentation this evening, if you guys have any questions or if you'd like additional detail, please interrupt us. It can go better if we have that kind of that interaction as we go. Going into the presentation this evening, we wanted to provide a background on the wastewater treatment plant. The plant was originally constructed in the seventies. And there have been several additions, including a third trickling filter and U V disinfection during the last five decades. As the sewage enters the plant, it goes through a number of steps. Includes influence screening and pumping, aerated grit removal, primary clarification, intermediate pumping by trickling filters, bottom clarification, sludge de-watering by our belt press, and then finally through our U V disinfection. Every step of the process is important. And failure at any point impacts operations and ultimately the quality of our effluent. As the plant and equipment age, the likelihood of an older component failing increases. And depending on what that component does, the consequence of that failure can be fairly significant. Also, does only that one component fail? Or does that result in a cascading effect across the plant? Many of these symptoms at the plant or systems at the plant are original. We're finding the components are obsolete. And we're finding replacement parts very difficult. In addition, some of our critical components have no backup. Back in November of twenty twenty one, the city hired H D R. To conduct a condition assessment of the plant and our lift stations. The main reasons for our condition assessments are to identify the various assets in the plant and our lift stations. Determine the remaining life of those assets, the maintenance needs and the cost to replace. Help staff create a computerized maintenance management system or C M M S. To better manage these assets. To define the critical components for the consequence of failure and the likelihood of failure with the facility's ability to function as designed at risk. And also to help develop a capital improvements plan for the facility that works to address these critical components while maintaining physical accountability to the rate payers. In kind of the last two items, we asked them to review the regulatory proposals that may change discharge limits at the facility. This is kind of a long range crystal ball. Out ten to fifteen years of what we might expect. And the other thing we asked for was to review our sludge disposal options. We talked to the commission back in the fall when we approved the contract with waste management. Where they doubled our costs to dispose of our sludge. At that time, they mentioned, hey, we may shut you off at some point. And so we felt it was important to look at our options for sludge disposal. H D R did review these operations and identified over one thousand separate assets at the plant. It should be noted, it's a lot more than a thousand assets. But these are the ones that are more significant from a cost, availability and impact on operations perspective. Based on this review, the initial findings are that while the city of Lebanon has a well run facility with talented staff, a combination of five decades of operations and limited funding for ongoing maintenance has taken its toll. As a result, there is a need for significant investments in several critical area of operations. The costs for the improvements are typically placed on the rate payers or if available, a funding source such as the American Rescue Plan Act is available. Our initial area of focus is where both the likelihood of failure and the consequence of failure are high. And that failure results in a facility that does not function as designed and fails to meet our discharge requirement. There's a number of critical areas, but a couple I'd like to focus on are our trickling filters, our belt press, our bar screen, and the belt press is combined with our administration building. And with that kind of introduction, I'd like to turn it over to Charlie. And he'll present an update on the condition assessment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks. Feel free anytime we're going along, if you have a question, jump on, jump right in.
Good setup. No, that's good. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, that absolutely will not be considered an interruption. This could be a dialogue because we've got quite a bit of material. You want to limit this to about an hour and a half? We do have. We do have quite a bit of material, but we will endeavor to get through it fairly quickly. Brian did a very good job setting the stage for this workshop. So we do want to touch on the condition assessment work that's been done to date. Brian mentioned those things that we were really focused on with this study. And then what some of the next steps and recommendations moving forward. We're completed to date. So we we brought in disciplined experts on mechanical engineers, architects, electrical process, the full nine yards descended on the plant. Invited us with some nice snowstorms while we were doing that. But Tim, John and the team at the plant helped us get through all the facilities at the plant itself and at the lift stations. So that was a rapid assessment. We put all of those assets into a list. We have started developing repair and replacement costs for those. We did some de-watering bench testing. That relates to what Brian was mentioning about how you're going to handle your solids. We looked at some different ways to maybe process those a little bit differently. Overall treatment process reviews of your plates to regulatory issues, which is the last part of my list there. So this is just a quick snapshot of the plant itself. Because sometimes different people call different assets or different facilities within the plant different names. We've put unique names and numbers to each of those to start the foundational elements of that computerized maintenance management system that Brian talked about. And we went through each of those facilities. We looked at pumps and motors and valves, you know, things that are worthy of tracking. If you think about going into your house and wanting to be prepared for things that might wear out at your house and need to be replaced, you wouldn't necessarily track light bulbs and things that are easily replaced. But the roof, major components, refrigerators, freezers, washers, dryers, those larger elements that are more costly and more critical, those are what we are tracking. So again, we identified over a thousand items that are worthy of tracking to see where they are in their useful life, how much life they have remaining and what that cost might be to replace those.
On those thousand items that you tracked, is there a wide range of how long they've been there? Are they all around like, oh, they've been all been here about twenty years, twenty-five years?
Great question. As Brian mentioned, actually, I think some of the original plant might have actually been built in the sixties and upgraded in the seventies. And then some other upgrades throughout the years and then just general maintenance. But yes, some of the equipment is actually original to the plant. Some of the equipment is well beyond its useful life. And again, you know, a manufacturer sells you something. The useful life is more than the warranty period on it. But you know, it's a pretty harsh environment. So they might say the useful life is generally twenty years. Depending on how it's maintained and just luck of the draw, it might go thirty years. Might go forty. In the case of your trickling filters, some of them have gone closer to fifty. But you know, you're kind of living on borrowed time when it when it goes well beyond what the manufacturer's or the industry averages. And you can kind of benchmark yourself with with other municipalities and see how their equipment runs. And so there there are some ways to gauge where you truly are in the life cycle of things. But yes, that was the point is to go in, identify all those assets, get them into initially just a spreadsheet, which is the foundational element, all these C M M S systems. And with the staff that have been boots on the ground there, operating it and running it all these years, they were able to fill in gaps in the information as to what had been replaced, what had been maintained, what had just been running great, whatever the case may be. Because it truly is a broad spectrum. So that was the that was the fundamental piece is to get in and identify all of those assets. This is just a snapshot of that spreadsheet. Just showing that, again, each of the things have a unique identifier so that they're easily tracked over time. And the intent there again is as you replace something, you would go into this list. You would update that. You would show the replacement time. You could put the cost of that replacement, what the maintenance periods are going to be and ultimately when that should be replaced and put a number in the bucket for when that should be replaced and how much that would cost. That's the essence of the C M M S system. But this first pass through was just to take a look at, again, let's get an inventory of everything and put a replacement value to that. That's the start of the C M M S and ultimately a C I P. So again, the areas that we focused on was that computerized maintenance management system. That's what I'm concerned. This isn't asset management isn't new, certainly. It might be new to some departments or some entities within cities. Sometimes asset management is just the workers work with it every day so they keep track of things and they know when things need to be, you know, when you need to put a shot of grease on them or you just know, okay, every ten years, we have to replace that motor, that pump, that whatever. But there are tools out there that make that a lot easier and more transparent. And that helps with developing those annual C I Ps and being more proactive rather than reactive to things. So that's the point there. Consequence.
And one thing we talked about is actually tagging all the equipment. And so we could actually go through and go to go to the U V building or whatever. We could hit that with our unit phone, scan that. And it'll tell us all the information about that phone or that equipment, the last time it was maintained, what maintenance is needed. It'll help us a lot in the process.
Install it. Yep, yep.
Yeah, there. That's a great point. There are some very elaborate tools out there now with technology the way it is. Just Q R code type thing. You scan with your phone. It'll pull up that asset management database. It'll tell you, okay, that needs to have an oil change, needs to be greased, it needs to do that. They can get very.
Time saving.
Amazingly time saving. And you're not then relying on the operators to, you know, capture it all in their head or anything like that. So that's very, very useful.
I don't want to get ahead, but have you guys identified a system like that already?
Not for you all yet. That's in a workshop to come is to sit down and see if there is anything already in use in the city. Because there's, you know, City Works, Blue City, Cartograph, there's a number of packaged C M Ms out there. They all have different prices, different licensing agreements, things of that nature. So we're really sit down, have that discussion and look more broadly at not not only what's going to work for Brian and the team at the wastewater plant, but perhaps across other departments in the city for you.
Thank you.
Sure. The next item, consequence of failure and likelihood of failure. I'm not sure if any of you have had the opportunity to sit through a work session where you rank consequence of failure and likelihood of failure. But you might think of, say, your automobile and you walk around and go, wow, those tires are looking a little bald. But you go, well, I only drive from my house to the office and it's five miles. So well, the likelihood of failure might be high because the tires are getting worn. The consequence of getting a flat tire, eh, not that high. Because you've got a spare tire plus it's only five miles to the office. That exact same vehicle, the exact same tires, and you're planning to do a two thousand mile road trip to your daughter's wedding, you're like, wow. The likelihood of failure is the same because the tires haven't changed. But the consequence of a failure is now much higher because I'm going on a critical road trip and I need to get there. And all four of them are bald. I only have one spare tire. It'd be even worse if you had no spare tire. Now the consequence of that failure goes way up. So these consequence of failure, likelihood of failure, they're not static because they they change as consequences change. And as the equipment ages, the likelihood goes up. Consequence might stay the same. But within a plant like this, as Brian mentioned, there are certain elements that are more important than others. The pump that brings the wastewater into the plant is very, very critical because if it goes down, your collection system might still bring the flow to the plant. But you can't push it through the plant without that pump or the trickling filters. There's there's certain elements that have a higher consequence of failure. So one of the next steps will be to sit down with staff, go through the assets. It's subjective because you have to, you know, use your judgment as how you score things so that you can get some differentiation between likelihood and consequence. But it's not that daunting of a task. I mean, some of it's very, very obvious. Others, a little bit gray, a little bit squishy, but we'll step through that process. We've done that quite a little bit and we'll guide that through. But it really comes down to, you know, staff ability to repair things themselves, things that are readily available, shelf items that you can just take off and replace, things like that.
You know, sorry to interrupt again, but H D R as a whole, you guys are primarily acting as a consulting firm for the city on this project.
That is correct.
Solely consulting. Okay.
That is correct. At this stage, certainly would like to lead to design and other things. But no, initially here, we're we're your consultant and that's our job is to consult.
Okay.
And to help guide you, guide you through this. Odor control and life safety, that's important if you have had the opportunity to visit the plant. Certainly, things have improved. Staff have identified some opportunities to make some improvements with some of the piping and venting in the building that greatly improve the ambiance, if you will. The first time I was there, I've been to a lot of wastewater plants all over the world, actually. And yours had a particular trademark, if you will. It stunk. I mean, that's just all there is to it. And, you know, that happens. There's reasons, I mean, why wastewater plants smell bad. But what made it worse was the administrative elements where the office offices are and Tim and John's office and everything are in the ground floor level. And above that is the belt filter press. Where all the solids that collect at the end of the treatment process go through a large press and it squeezes the liquid out of it. And it produces that solid that then has to get hauled to the landfill. Well, there's gases that come off of that. And they were kind of getting sort of recirculated in the building. So the people working in the building had to smell that pungent odor. So it's there's life safety concerns. There are electronic equipment in there that have potential to spark. And those gases oftentimes are flammable. So there are, you know, again, life safety concerns there as well.
Absolutely.
I have a question. But the the trickling system that we've had forever and then would tend to have smell come off of it anyway, wouldn't it?
Some.
I mean, instead of like, I think it's, is it the some plants have, is it the churning effect to where it doesn't smell at all?
Well, there are trickling filters in and of themselves don't necessarily have odor associated with them.
It's the process.
Not a lot of odor, but part of it is the big storage tanks could benefit from some additional aeration because they they start to go septic when there's not enough air in there. And there there are some some ways to optimize things.
I don't know who had the idea years ago of sticking an admin facility right underneath where they're doing all that work.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, that's, that's my thought.
And part of it is, you know, it's hard to say what decisions were made at the time.
And maybe, maybe it didn't smell back then.
Well, in building.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's Brian who made the decision.
Way back when.
Some of it relates to building codes. Building codes were much different back in the sixties, seventies, eighties. They update them all the time. And and who knows? I mean, the budget may have been a constraint. And so they they looked at, you know, having the lab and the admin building, you know, all combined. But again, some of the things staff have found some some piping, some venting that had separated. They fixed that and it made a world of difference. But, you know, it's just one of those things that it was an opportunity to look at it and we wanted to be cognizant of it. And that that was for the whole facility again, the way things were designed forty or fifty years ago. The codes were different. There's maybe trip and fall hazards. There are other things that that you want to look for. So that was very important for for staff safety. Obsolete equipment or obsolete processes, we wanted to look at that and, you know, not miss any opportunities to make some drastic improvements. The landfill costs and availability of the landfill, as Brian mentioned, and then regulatory drivers. So some of the next steps, again, we refer back to that C M M S. That's that's a workshop that we will have with with staff. We'll go through all of that in that image down at the the lower right. Again, you're going to take those thousand plus assets. You're going to rank those. You're going to look at those. You might tweak the the weighting of them. But generally, you get a distribution kind of like that graph represents. Some will have very low consequence of of failure. That's that light bulb that burns out, but it might have a really high likelihood of failure. But again, others will have both a high consequence of failure and a high likelihood of failure. Those are those ones that go into that upper box and say, you need to be looking at those right now. Because with equipment shortages, material shortages that are out there right now, certain things, if it fails and you don't have a backup, you might be waiting six months to get it. And it could be a very costly workaround to keep the plant running.
Right.
I definitely think, Mr. Faust, on this package up here, talking about asset management, there are a lot of scalable packages out there and that we could, you know, for X amount of, I don't know, five thousand, whatever, you know, your license is priced out depending on how many assets you want to manage. But the way we can use that in other departments and keeping track of equipment. I mean, I could see a huge benefit potentially. A little bit more rise in cost, but still definitely on the radar now, so.
Yeah, and those those tools, again, we've seen them used within certain municipalities where all the departments use a similar tool. So that when you roll up your C I P, the city manager knows that your top one through ten, how they stack against some other departments, one through ten, and their top ten. Because it's more of an apples to apples comparison when you're at least working from kind of the same sheet music. So there are some really good tools out there. Again, we want to to identify those critical assets. And that too is a, that's a living document, a work in progress. Because again, three years ago, the equipment was pretty readily available. You knew where the costs were and everything. And it's certainly gotten worse and is continuing to get worse. The supply chain interruption, just everything is is making certain pieces of equipment that, like I said, used to be just go to wind water and you need a valve, you got a valve. You need a pump, you got a pump. Now you might wait six months, eight months to get what you used to just take right off the shelf. So it's very important that we identify those critical assets and look for redundancy in operation or in equipment. Again, that consequence and likelihood of failure workshop is is important to have with staffs. We'll be pushing on that. That will lead to that C I P. So that you know what your capital improvements plan needs to be for the immediate. And we'll break it into a few different year blocks so you can see some distance out into the future. Optimize that sludge disposal. There are things that can be done that can make it maybe not a real marketable product, but there is useful nutrients in the solids. And some farmers would, at a minimum, welcome putting it on their property with fertilizer prices the way they are.
Mr. Faust, yeah, gave us an example. Where was that from that you took that when you, on that sludge disposal?
Well, there's just a couple. I think Lansing, I think, actually does land, land the supply.
Yeah.
We actually looked at a sludge reed beds. I think it was Blue Springs or Lee's Summit that put in these reed beds that actually.
Yeah, that was it.
They're actually pretty, pretty nice option. And we think we have adequate room at the facility to instruct those and put those in.
And it doesn't smell?
No, that's the nice thing about it. The reeds just take the nutrients up out of it. And you have a series of those beds. You fill them. Once the plants have taken everything out, you basically just skim those off. And you you save them. It's basically like digging up your bulbs at the end of the season and replant them in the spring. You just scrape those off, take the sludge out. It can be land applied. You put fresh sludge in, replant the the reeds and it's a greener solution.
Yeah, I like that.
But yes, there's there's opportunities besides just taking it to the landfill because that gets costly. And at some point in time, the landfill could cut you off and say they aren't taking that product anymore. They might give you a six month heads up. They might give you a six day. You just never know. So that that's something that we need to look at. And then for the permitting. On that, because you do discharge to the Missouri River, and unfortunately, the Missouri River is not super clean, but it is a very large water body, so it has quite good assimilative capacity. But the E P A in the states, all that are touched by the Missouri River, look at that and they determine how much load each of the municipalities that discharge to and how much load each are allocated. And your plant and your your operators, Tim and John and the rest, do a great job operating the plant. So you don't have issues meeting your permit. Once in a while, you might have a permit interruption if a critical piece of equipment has gone down for maintenance or then maybe there's a wet weather event that hits you with way more water than you anticipated. But by and large, the plant runs great and the staff have done a great job. And that crystal ball, as we look into it, two, three, four permitting cycles, each at three to five year intervals, we're not seeing any big regulatory changes that are coming down down the pipe for you. So there's not really a driver in that sense to make some big change in in the process. The process that's there is a pretty basic process. Again, it's an older plant, but it's a it's a pretty basic treatment process that works for you.
And other plants still still have this too?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, this this is not an antiquated process per se. Now, trickling filters aren't quite as common anymore, but they still work very well. And here where you don't have a big industrial load or or something out of the ordinary, it's largely a domestic load and and light commercial retail. The plant processes work phenomenally well, so there's no issues there.
Okay, thank you.
So this is certainly not an exhaustive list. But again, we've touched on this a little bit, some of those critical assets, some that are absolutely obsolete at this point with with the bar screen, the grit classifier. Two of the trickling filters are are original to the plant. And they generally speaking have a twenty to thirty year life. So those are fifty plus a year. And they're they're showing some stress. They're they're not as easy as, you know, pulling the dipstick on your car and seeing if the oil is nice and clean or, you know, grungy or whatever. They're a little bit harder to definitively say they have failed unless they truly have out and out collapsed. But you can see pockets of sediment, algae starting to build on them. So they're they definitely need to be need to be addressed. And they don't both have to be done at the same time, certainly. The trickling filters were down for maintenance previously. And the plant can operate with one or two of the trickling filters as long as no big load changes. But it certainly, again, to have some redundancy there and ensuring good operation. The belt filter press. Again, Tim and John worked with the vendor and did some improvements to it recently with some of the big bull gears that drive the belt and everything. That equipment is not antiquated per se. Belt filter presses get put in every day. They're a useful piece of equipment, still very modern in their in their handling of solids. But your particular belt filter press is old. And then again, looking at whether it makes sense to separate that from the admin building. You either move the admin lab and everything out, then you have space there.
Probably not installing above everybody's office every day, are they?
No, not not the same age. They really. But oftentimes, you know, it it works because then it's you can easily back. But oftentimes, you know, it, it, it works because then it's, you, you easily back your dump truck in underneath it and it drops in and you don't have to lift it up. So if, if the plant hydraulics work, they would put them on a second floor because the, the plant hydraulics had it at that level anyway. So you're, you're not wasting pumping by taking it to a lower level and pumping it back up or lifting it back up. So you're always looking at the overall efficiency of the plant.
Right.
And so just the way this plant was laid out vertically, the hydraulics afforded it to, to go straight into that second floor levels. And then they're like, well, what if I went to the whole first floor? Well, let's put people in there, you know what I mean?
I'm sorry, I'm still hung up on that, so.
You know, again, probably not the greatest design, but it, it's worked all these many years. And then again, uh, the two big holding tanks, uh, just to the north of the admin building. Uh, again, getting some aeration back into those and, and also look at, since we do have prevailing north winds in the colder months of the year. Your air circulation on that admin building might actually be pulling bad air off of those, those tanks. So there's just some things that need to be looked at to optimize and, and again, make sure that we're keeping things safe for the, for the employees working there. Uh, as far as the CIP development, uh, while there's any number of different nuanced options, the, the two basic things that we're looking at is, again, you're not necessarily expecting a lot of new growth, you know, beyond your, your typical growth, there, there may be some development opportunities and things of that nature. No real big industrial parks or anything moving in that we're aware of at this time. That would bring a new type of a waste stream. Uh, not that the plant doesn't have some, uh, flexibility in, in what it can handle. But again, there didn't seem to be, that we were aware of big drivers for expanding the capacity of the plant per se. There's no permitting drivers to say, okay, they're instantly gonna halve your, your loading limits or anything like that. So it's basically status quo. It's a great plant, your operators know how to operate it, they do a great job doing that. So let's just try and get out in front of things, so you're not reacting to things, you're proactive.
Right.
And keep that plant running good.
Right.
And that's, that's basically option one, is just keep doing what you're doing and, uh, stay out in front of things so that you're proactive rather than react. Option two then is looking at those life safety upgrades. And again, that could still fall within the footprint of maintaining the existing. Again, staff have identified some things that greatly, um, improved the working environment with, with those odors. But there are some, some other things that we could look at. If that belt filter press was going to be replaced, for example, with a screw press, which is a more efficient type of a press. Maybe that's the time to move it to a separate building. And, uh, so that, that's kind of what we were looking at there and that, that will continue to work for you with staff. So again, that's, that's just that, that option one, looking at, at those upgrades over the next, uh, one to three years. Some of those things that have totally worn out, um, and, and are obvious and in, in need of replacement because there's not enough redundancy there without those. Option two, again, I know those figures are a little bit hard to see, but in the upper right, uh, with building codes the way they are now, areas in treatment plans have different classifications because again, you have electronic components in the same footprint as, uh, flammable gases. The methanes and some of the other gases that come off of the treatment process are highly flammable. And so there's, there's some things that would need to be looked at. If you're doing major modifications to facilities, the building codes kick in. If you're doing minor upkeep and replacement of parts, the building codes don't necessarily kick in, but that, that truly comes down to your codes officials and how your code officials apply the building codes. And then again, there's, there's opportunities maybe to totally separate those and eliminate a lot of those life safety issues by doing a full up building separation. So again, just hitting on the points that we already made, the next steps going forward again is to sit down with staff, work through what is the right CMMS, CMMS tool for the city. Identify those critical assets, excuse me, and the need to replace those. Get through that, uh, consequence and likelihood of failure. Develop that CIP, look at the sludge disposal optimization and the permitting.
There's some water if you want some.
Any, uh, any additional questions?
Well, I had a few, uh, can you tell me, just kind of timeframe to get some of these additional pieces put together? Uh, some of the studies you're gonna do and identifying the critical list and everything like that.
Honestly, we, we do want to get it done as quickly as we can. I know it's, it's budgeting season perhaps, or maybe a perpetual budgeting season, but, uh, the intent is to sit down with staff, uh, get through the, the consequence and likelihood of failure workshop, hopefully over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Uh, finish vetting the cost, uh, and timeline for those repairs which go into that CIP. I think we're ninety percent there on that.
Okay.
The critical assets, again, we're, we're ninety percent. So I think all in all, we should have this wrapped up in four to six weeks at the moment.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, like you said, we want to be proactive with this because, uh, this is, you know, a necessity that we need, you know? It's infrastructure and, uh, I know people don't really like to talk about it, it's nothing fancy, but you know, it is needed for a city.
That, that being said, Mr. Faust, can you just walk us through, for everybody listening into, if our plant fails, how is that eventually gonna impact every resident here in Leavenworth? Uh, without any assumptions, if you, if you can kind of give us an idea.
If the plant fails, we, we would start discharging the Missouri River at a level higher than we're allowed to.
Which means?
Significant fines.
No, exactly.
Yeah.
But right, we start getting fined from the EPA, uh, significantly, which is gonna, we're gonna start imploding.
Correct. The other thing to do is they will say a moratorium on building permits. That's a real common one, if you're not able to.
No more, what was that again?
Moratorium on building permits.
Okay.
If you, if you can't meet your levels now, why would you let me, why would we let you continue to develop?
Right.
So until you get it fixed and up and running, a building permits, that's, that's happening in communities in Kansas.
Okay.
So there's, there's a number of options or things that are bad that would happen.
Yeah, yeah, everybody shares the burden and then we stop developing economically and nobody wants to move to Leavenworth, so. Just to make sure that's all out there and clearly, this is, it is necessary, so.
Proactive. Look at it before anything.
Absolutely.
And especially with the age of all the valves and everything too.
If you go out there and look at something like electronics, I mean, it's, it's like out of the movie from the sixties.
Is it?
I mean, just like, this is still running and you gotta talk to Tim.
I mean, I've been out there, but yeah.
No, I mean, it's almost like you go on eBay, you know, okay, I find a part for this, I mean, and that's not, not where we should be.
Right, 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 I totally agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm glad you think it this way after seeing the equipment too, which is like, holy smokes, well, I know they're not making these anymore, like.
And, well, yeah, and you're like, well, it's great, it's lasted this long, but it was only really supposed to last this long. So we're, we're walking on, you know.
They're nice.
Yep, we are.
And I, you know, I don't know who first brought up the idea of, hey, you know, this stuff fifty years old. But, uh, we, we need to take a serious look at it and see what we can do to make it continue to work. What do we need to replace, what do we need to fix? What do we need to construct? Let's see, as far as the, uh, the admin and belt press building, I remember that building. And that was when it was turned off.
And that's it, you have a plan, it's like, okay, let's really focus on this and then just the steps for the next couple of years. What can wait a little bit, but what has to be done?
And that's what we'd ask with HBR on this is, you know, what are those things like right now?
Yeah.
What's those immediate needs and, you know, we know we can't afford to do everything that we would like to do. But what, what's critical that we do and how can we program that out over the next ten plus years? To, to make sure that we keep the plant running good.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, basically set up a, a one to N. Okay, this has to be for a priority list.
Yeah.
And we don't have to get into it tonight, but it, it's important to note that every single dollar that runs that plant comes from rates. It's an enterprise fund, therefore user fees pay the salaries of the employees. They pay the fees to de, to dump at Deffenbaugh, they pay the fees to dump at the transfer station, they pay for components and chemicals and everything that operates there is rate based. So why we could come up with a big number, I think that the reason, some of the reason we're here where we are now is it's a relatively small amount of people who pay those rates. And if you're looking at millions of dollars in upgrades, those come in the form of double digit rate increases. And so as we have on item three today, we may have a unique opportunity right now. But when we did the UV building, which was a mandate that we do that, um, you cannot pay for that with sales tax or property tax, you have to pay for that with user fees. And we had double digit rate increases to pay for that required addition to the plan. So just a, just a discussion on when we start getting into this big list of things to do.
Yeah.
Um, that's gonna come for uses or charges for service.
Right.
I think that critical list is gonna be, you know, important for that, so, yep.
Yeah.
And did you say it was Deffenbaugh that floated the idea that they may return us off?
Workman's Management.
Okay.
It used to be Deffenbaugh.
Yeah, the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We, we talked to him last year and, uh, basically our, our, what we take down is fairly liquidy. And so they were worried about stability of their landfill. And so they anticipate a certain amount of household trash and other trash combined with that. And, uh, they doubled our rates because they weren't getting, uh, that mix that they wanted. And they made it very clear that they've, uh, there is a possibility that they will, they will.
And that's because the press just was not operating as efficiently as.
Right, so with that deep watering test that we did, we tried a variety of polymers which are added to that to help draw the water out and get you a really dry cake. Cause again, if, if it's too liquidy, I mean, you have to have a different type of a truck or tank to haul it in the first place.
Right.
You're not leaving a trail everywhere you're going. But they don't like it when it comes in so wet, cause like Brian said, for them to have a stable landfill, then they have to mix a binder.
Sure.
Into it in the form of other trash.
Eric shot that across the bow, okay.
Yeah.
Like it bef, like that bef, when they get it, instead of them having to do it.
Right, plus over time, that leaches out and they have to deal with the leachate and any of the metals and other things that accumulate in that. There's a downstream cost to the, to the landfills to treat that. So they're, eventually we'll get to a point where they'll simply say they aren't gonna take it. And unless some other agency steps and enforces them to take it, they can shut you off.
Sure, okay.
Sure, okay. Okay, great.
Thank you for the detailed work.
Appreciate you inviting me.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, no, I just appreciate the fact that somebody saw this last year and, uh, said, let's get going on this thing.
No, thank you for your report, yeah, thank you very much, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, next up, speed study on Fourth Street, Eisenhower to Metropolitan.
Continue with Brian.
Brian, is this the, uh, the new Public Works, uh?
This is, this is our poster, this is Public Works Week and this is Ready and Resilient.
Yeah.
We actually put.
That is sort of cool. Are you guys dancing?
This was interesting.
We brought this to the, uh, commission back in July of twenty twenty-one, uh, in driving Fourth Streets. We kind of had a question is why do we, uh, it's forty in Lansing and it goes to forty-five at the southern end and then it goes to thirty-five and then it goes to thirty and then it goes to twenty and then it goes to thirty. A lot of speed limit changes on Fourth Street and we were kind of questioning, um, does that actually meet the conditions, uh, out there? And aware of speed limits that are posted incorrectly, whether too high or too low, uh, can be ignored by, um, the traveling public and often can result in accidents. And so we felt it was important to do a speed study and the commission agreed. And so we hired, uh, Merge Midwest to do the study. And we looked at six segments, we did, we had them not look at downtown where it's currently posted at twenty. We felt that's an appropriate speed for our downtown area, so we didn't have, we looked at that. But what the map shows you are six segments, uh, the first segment is south end where it's currently posted at forty-five. And it goes from Eisenhower to Oregon or basically right near St. John's. Um, and then from Oregon, uh, up to Limit, uh, it's currently thirty-five. And then from Limit all the way to Spruce is thirty. And then actually Spruce to Choctaw, it's thirty, but that's where the street narrows. And so you got a fairly wide road, uh, coming from the south all the way up to Spruce. Like I said, just as soon as you get north of Spruce, the lanes narrow. And so you kind of, with the truck traffic and all the car traffic, you just kind of feel kind of tight there. And so we looked at that specific area and then we looked north of downtown. And so Merge Mid, Midwest came in to do the speed study of what the tr, the volume of traffic. They looked at the speed that people were driving. They also looked at the crash history along the length of the roadway. And basically what they determined was at the south end where it's currently posted at forty-five, when you take into account the accident history there, the recommendation is to drop that to forty. It's actually, the design for forty-five is okay. And that's not a problem, uh, but when you look at the crashes that are involved, it's the, you, the Home Depot and the Starbucks and all the businesses there and all the access points, all those points of conflict in that area. Forty-five was not the speed limit that they recommended, they recommended dropping to forty. When you get to St. John's where it drops to thirty-five, they again looked at the, what people are comfortable traveling, they looked at the accident history, they looked at the design of the road and they said that actually could be increased to forty. And so you would end up having, it can, a speed limit posted forty all the way through Lansing, all the way through Leavenworth up to Limit Street. And once they got to Limit, they recommended going to thirty-five, currently posted at thirty. Uh, they felt that speed limit was too slow, um, based on both the eighty-fifth percentile. That's one of the things they look at in engineering is what's the eighty-five percent of people comfortable traveling? Uh, thirty-five was the speed limit they recommended. They also use a federal highway administration program, um, and plug the numbers into that and it also came up with thirty-five. When they got to Spruce, uh, we did express concern about north of Spruce as it narrows. Uh, they looked at that and recommended thirty as it is posted now. And then north of downtown, the road widens back out and they recommended the posting of thirty-five.
Which one is it, north?
What's the spruce?
Uh, from Spruce to Choctaw, right now it's thirty, but, uh, it's four lanes, but it's a narrow four lanes. And you got that jog right by the county buildings.
Yeah.
Before you get to the bridge, uh, they recommended, that's thirty now, they recommended staying at thirty.
Stay in the.
They did not, but, and then quite honestly, that was the area that KDOT expressed concern about. We ran the study by KDOT, uh, to see if they, you know, agreed with the conclusions and they did. Their concern they mentioned in their email was same area, Spruce to Choctaw. They were concerned that we were gonna change that to thirty-five. And they, they were very comfortable with thirty, they recommended that also.
That's where the, the, uh, the width of the lanes loses three feet, doesn't it? Three to three and a half feet.
Correct. And then. And actually we paved the, the gutter line. And so you're actually, the lane actually goes to the face of the curb. Most streets you have a, a basically a two foot curve and gutter section and then you have your road. We paved to the, the face of the, of the curb.
Yeah.
And so that's actually included in the driving lanes. Um, so we have somewhere between nine, about nine and a half to ten foot lanes in that area and your standard lane should be at least eleven feet.
Especially for, especially for an eighteen wheeler rolling up it.
And actually you have that jog just before you come down the hill to the bridge and that's, when you got two lanes each direction, that can be kind of exciting.
What it used to have right there, I'm on Fourth Street, but, uh, they don't allow it anymore to park in front of that courthouse there, so. Take that out, so.
So the speed increase looks like for most of the segment, it looks like, which is a five mile an hour increase?
Correct, um, decreased on the, on the south end.
Yeah.
Forty-five to forty.
Yeah, that's good.
But then where it's currently thirty-five, go to forty. And where it's currently thirty, except for Spruce to Choctaw.
Right.
Increase it to thirty-five.
Yeah.
That's the recommendation.
Gotcha.
He's not here tonight, but the police chief and, uh, uh, traffic unit has looked all through this and they're supportive of the recommendations by Merge Midwest. Uh, KDOT has also reviewed the study. Um, some, you may ask, well, why do you have to do a study to look, to look at the speeds and that's sort of seeing common sense? If you're going to do it on a state highway, then this level of data, um, is what KDOT is going to require to make any change.
State level.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it. I, because.
Yeah, I drove it just to see.
So now, these are ours to, to decide. We didn't make a decision and then have to get it approved by KDOT, do we?
Well, KDOT's actually already reviewed it and said they're good. They'd actually said they would help us change the signs if needed.
You don't have to take action tonight. Um, you don't have to accept all of them. Um, you know, you can, you can look at them. It's really up to the direction the commission wants to go at this point. If you need any more information, um, we're certainly happy to give it the, the full study with all their individual data is well over a hundred pages, I believe.
We, we, we didn't provide you the hundred diagrams of each segment with the traffic council.
Uh, just out of curiosity, uh, how, how long was the, the study conducted? Were they actually taking data samples?
They, they took data. It was, it was one day. They actually had some problems with their equipment. So there's different days for different sections. Uh, but they did a weekday when school was in session.
How, how many cars did they capture in a, a given day? Cause I just kind of carry some volume.
I'd have to get that to you.
That's okay. I was just kind of curious.
That was in here. I just can't remember. I flipped right to it. I believe that was in here.
The what?
It's not. The number of cars on, on the normal day. Um, what time, do you know, what time of day did they do this?
It's twenty four hour count.
Okay.
They did it, they did it for twenty four hours.
Yeah, a lot of them had about twenty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty two thousand, seventeen thousand. So.
Yeah.
Right. And these areas that we, uh, focus on, has there been any complaints about speeding?
It was, I think it was triggered a lot by the crash history that we had, but then also just the variability and then that area, that Abels Field area where it goes down to thirty.
Yeah.
It feels like you're going too slow.
And that's one of the things staff noticed. I mean, when, when we're out there, you know, forty five is south end was, actually feels about right. Um, and then the thirty five, oh man, that's just almost a hair too slow. But then when you get into the thirty and again around Abels Field, um, just go thirty and you're the only one. I mean, the, the traffic is much, is very comfortable going over that speed limit.
Yeah.
Um, and so again, people are ignoring the posted speed limit, uh, which creates problems in itself. So.
I wonder if thirty five will bring forty five out to people.
Well, that, that's a, that's a common question, but it's not, you know, people will drive the speed that they feel comfortable driving. Brian can talk about that dynamic, but that's an interesting sort of.
Right. And, and if you look at what they showed, I think they showed like thirty nine miles per hour in that area. Um, it's kind of that eighty fifth percentile speed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But they basically wanted to post it just below that. So you, you know, they did it five mile an hour increments. So they, they weren't comfortable going to forty. Um, but thirty five was where they were comfortable with.
Okay, cool. Um, thank you. You guys have?
No, thank you very much.
Would you like to see it again? Do you want a consensus to move forward? Would, would they need a little bit of, uh, direction from?
I mean, I'm getting to move forward on it. Let's, you know, if you guys are.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get going on it.
Alright.
Thank you.
I've got a friend from the Stanislaw.
Yeah.
She would like the Abels Field area to be moved faster. He got taken there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Next up, discussion of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding.
Alright, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commission. I'll be leading this item. Uh, the second large amount of federal funding that came after the CARES Act was the, uh, ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan Act funding. The city of Leavenworth is set to receive eight million, five hundred and forty nine thousand, sixty three dollars in ARPA funding directly from the US Treasury Department. The award was divided into two equal tranches, the second of which the city manager's office, uh, I signed for it, um, registered for just about a week and a half ago. Uh, finance director's out. I'm guessing it probably hit the bank account this week. Um, so that would be the city's full allotment. From the initial, uh, tranche of, uh, four million, two hundred and seventy four thousand, five hundred and thirty one dollars and fifty cents. The city, um, started primarily in early two thousand and one through about the middle of two thousand and one, expended approximately one point one five million for expenses beyond revenues. Which was one of the original intents of the funding. Let me give you some examples. Um, this is pandemic and influenced revenue decreases and stuff like motor fuel tax, um, special alcohol tax. Um, we still ran a community center, but we didn't have the reservations. We didn't have the weddings. We still ran a recreation program, but our numbers were down. So all those areas that fund city operations, uh, those were the intended. So you did not have to increase revenues or raise taxes. You would use this ARPA funding to, um, essentially cover those expenses. Fortunately, based on a combination of revenues returning to pre-pandemic levels, operational adjustments, there have been no ARPA funds drawn by the city for twenty twenty two. Um, and we actually were able to, um, cease those, cease drawing on those funds, um, in the third quarter of twenty twenty one. Nor do we expect any future draws from ARPA funds for these issues going forward. Basically we're back to, uh, normal operations. Based on that, the amount available for discussion tonight on our first discussion is seven million, three hundred and ninety six thousand, eight hundred and forty three dollars and seventeen cents. So we have to keep pretty, uh, close, uh, tabs on this, um, for, uh, reporting purposes.
Sure.
So the city has a wide discretion of use on these funds and I want to make a clarification right up front. Um, one of these two, uh, exceptions is not, is no longer the case. So, um. The first one is with two exceptions, it says cannot directly or indirectly offset or reduce taxes. That was true through the interim report. That was through, that was true through most all of this until the final report came out. And that is no longer true. The only agencies that cannot use them for a tax offset are states, states or territories. So local government can, that's a change from what cities have been operating on since this first came out. Uh, but we wanted to make that clear. The league is working on information to get out to cities and counties. National League of Cities is, uh, National Association of Counties and such. Um, it does still hold true that funds cannot be deposited in pension funds nor into reserves. The entirety of the funds, and this is probably the most key part, the entirety of the funds must be obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And spent by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. I'll give you a difference between obligated and spent. If you did a road project, for example, um, you could award the contract in December of twenty, uh, twenty twenty four. For it to be constructed in twenty twenty five. Obligation cannot mean that you have it set sort of in, in internal line for IT expenses. That's not obligated. This is something, some action that the commission has taken, a contract we've signed, um, they will allow you to do that before the deadline. Um, although, while many project options can be accommodated within this timeframe, if the commission does elect to do, um, complex infrastructure projects, um, or expansions, time could be an issue. And a couple of notes, um, about, uh, potential uses from the GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association. Investment in critical infrastructure is particularly well suited to ARPA funds because it's a non-recurring expenditure that can be targeted strategically. Uh, for important long-term assets that provide benefit over many years. I'll get to the second part in a minute. Use of ARPA funds to cover operating deficits caused by COVID nineteen should be considered temporary. We've crossed that stage. So that item's, I don't think, uh, pertinent at this point for us. And then the final item there is care should be taken to avoid creating new programs or add-ons to existing programs that require an ongoing financial commitment. I think, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, as a starting point for the discussion, staff put together a framework of potential uses for the funds. Uh, uses were reviewed and included based on the following. We looked at known and immediate pub, public infrastructure projects. Um, it is not coincidental that we're having this discussion tonight after we were able to hear the condition assessment, uh, for the wastewater treatment plant. We wanted at least the initial report to be complete. So we could have an intelligent discussion about that critical piece of infrastructure. We looked at items in the city commission's adopted twenty thirty comprehensive land use plan. We looked at items that appear in the city commission's adopted goals. We looked at items that are one-time expenditures designed to have a positive impact on city operations and resident experience. We looked at items that could have a long-term, strong return on investment, but high initial costs that make them less viable. Something that has that initial, uh, investment, um, with payoff in the long run. Projects that, or uses that fit, uh, the expenditure deadlines, what can we get done relatively quickly? Items that improve quality of life in the community, help businesses, remove hurdles to growth and prosperity. And items with a significant cost that will have to be addressed in the near future. There's some examples of these before. You have to start somewhere. So the interest of organizing the discussion and attempting to create a framework to assign the funds. Uh, staff put together, um, a draft outline, we're using some funding categories. The items in here are not exhaustive. This is a discussion. This is open for commission feedback. Um, we certainly will look and get you more information if you have any specific questions tonight, but I wanted to go through a few. Critical infrastructure, as pointed out in the GFOA guidance and most of the guidance that comes from the ARPA, uh, funds. Uh, is usually the number one item for the, for, uh, governing body. So this one, the wastewater treatment plant. No more critical piece of, uh, city infrastructure than the fifty year old plant, which we just heard a minute ago. Um, we didn't talk about the fact that it also treats Fort Leavenworth and the VA. Those are federal partners of ours, um, that we have contracts with. In general, the plan is in good shape. As you heard, it's been well run, but there are, uh, critical pieces of infrastructure and I, I'm focusing on three when we get down there. Replacement, um, of those is essential to plan operations and most likely, uh, the only other way to fund those would be wastewater rate increases if ARPA is not allocated. So I'll, I'll hit those at the end, uh, what those three might be and some costs associated with those. There's certainly, um, an endless list of other things you could deem critical infrastructure. ADA upgrades across the city. Um, as we do road projects, we work on the ADA ramps on an intersection. We simply don't have the funding to go intersection by intersection. Uh, and do that. We do do a couple a year in the downtown, um, but there are certainly a lot of intersections that need those upgrades. We, uh, replacement of known failing sewer lines. There's also stormwater issues, but I believe we have a pretty good handle on that with our stormwater program. Um, and of course other roads, um, piping sidewalks in the city. Uh, community or business investment, uh, the city commission included to explore partnership with the Boys or Girls Club or similar organization to promote activity and opportunity for the Leavenworth youth in the most recent goals document. Boys and Girls Club of Kansas City operates thirteen locations in the area is interested in pursuing a location in Leavenworth. And through the information we've gathered, the primary hurdle is location. Eventually they run their own entity. They do their own operational funding. They do their own hiring of staff. Um, they can function independently. Um, but they don't, they usually don't get involved in the initial, um, location identification and preparation of a facility. So that's, um, a possibility. If the city doesn't tend to go that way, um, there's certainly other ways to do that through fundraising or other ways, but, uh, ARPA funding would be a, a possibility. So looking at the business community and looking at the time sensitive nature of this, one thing that, that's jumped up, I think the commission has brought it to our attention. I think Main Street's brought it to our attention. I think some business owners have brought it to our attention. Is with fire codes, uh, there's a significant hurdle in some historic buildings. Um, the investment doesn't always match the return on fire suppression systems. Um, that requirement is not going away. If you, uh, the number one priority is safety of residents and people who use our businesses. But it, but we recognize it is a hurdle. So it doesn't have to be fire suppression or ADA upgrade grants, but you could set aside an amount of money to help that, uh, uh. Area that we know, uh, has problems. Uh, so also in community and business investment, you could look at further grants for nonprofit agencies, uh, grants geared toward workforce development. Certainly a lot of opportunity within the community and business investment. City facility investment, um, city hall, just like the treatment plant, uh, it's a beautiful building, but it's old. It'll turn a hundred, uh, years old, uh, in twenty twenty four. The thing we focused really on here is, um, mechanical plumbing and exterior, uh, water infiltration issues. Uh, mechanical and plumbing components, the hydronic and mechanical condensate piping, that's all the piping that runs through this building. Those elements were not addressed in the two thousand and four renovation and we're starting to see some issues with those. This is one that we've talked about, um, a little bit informally and it's, it's a big one, but, um, just something for the commission to think about. The administrative and public facing offices in the Parks and Recreation Department are located in the basement of the community center. If you haven't been there, you could not find them. You could access them through one single door. And there's no reception area. There are no conference rooms. There's nowhere to meet a vendor, um, a coach, uh, a participant in a program. Um, the offices have no, as I said, no meeting space, no front desk or reception area. The goal would be to create an administrative offices, uh, and a functional reception area at a small conference room to meet with perspective. Uh, we also are trying to bring more conferences to the city. We have no place to meet with them. We'll set up in the women's waiting room or the men's waiting room, which have bad acoustics and they're sort of open. Uh, wedding planners, tour groups, contractors, vendors, um, onsite who want to see the facility. There's really no good place to, to regroup. So we have some ideas on how we would do that. Uh, the next one is long-term efficiency or investment projects. Uh, renewable energy or upgrading existing systems appears in multiple places in the twenty thirty comp plan. Including two strategies to explore solar, battery and wind opportunities to diversify the city's power supply mix. And upgrade or maintain infrastructure and facilities to meet future needs and demands. I had Roberta, our finance director, poll our every bill from, uh, Riverfront Community Center for the last three years and the average is about a hundred and five thousand dollars. That we pay, um, in electricity bills. We have explored in the past, what does a solar array look like on that building? The, the, the hurdle there is the upfront cost. It pays back over ten years, you know, something like that. But if you had that initial cost upfront through a one-time federal dollars, you could start realizing savings in year one. So it doesn't have to be the community center. Yes, sir.
And the, uh, the electric bill that was specifically for just there in the Riverfront Community Center?
Yeah, maybe between ninety five and a hundred and five thousand.
Yeah.
No, a year.
Oh, a year.
It's none of their other facilities.
That, that includes the indoor pool, the gym, and then of course, all levels of the community center. So. Um, and we are subject to whatever the rates may be on that building. So those are costs that, that could increase. Uh, we could also look at other facilities, certainly. We have done energy audits. We had, um, oh, I forget, Honeywell came and did an energy audit of all city buildings. We made a few changes from that. Um, our buildings are pretty energy efficient. Um, so we did that three years ago and I think we still have that report. A couple other, uh, and then this falls under other commission distraction, um, replace one, uh, fire truck. This, this is the items, we know they're expensive, that are coming and try to lessen the hit on the capital budget or the operating budget. City has seven fire trucks in our fleet. Four of them have been replaced in the last six years. We have three left, um, that need to be replaced at a later date. Um, at that point, we'll do what we did with the other fire trucks as we issue debt or issue bonds to pay for those. By selecting the worst of the three remaining, the city could purchase that and push off that debt issuance, um, just, just an option as a piece, is. That, that sticks out as a piece of capital one-time equipment, uh, that is extremely costly. Refuge changes, I don't want to get ahead of the city solid waste task force. Uh, they're working on recommendations for future operations for refuse pickup. Much like wastewater, any changes that come from that program, uh, will be paid for or funded by user fees. So if there is a change that requires funds, you could elect to hold back, um, some funds at this point, um, as part of the implementation, which. Would essentially negate any need to do any kind of refuse, uh, rate increase to fund any changes. Again, I don't want to get out ahead of what they would, uh, recommend, but, um, just an idea. Housing is a big one. That's a tough one. It's also hard, something that's hard to get your hands around this fast. Um, what could you do? The city could do something like land accumulation and site preparation with a bidding process for some type of residential project. That would be something that if the commission had desire, we would start working on. If you didn't, then that would, we would, uh, turn our attention somewhere else.
What do you mean?
Um, so if you really wanted to look at housing, if you wanted to look at some ac- land accumulation, we would need some fairly quick, uh, indication that you wanted to go that way. Cause that's a lot, that's a lot to undertake. Trails, playground, park amenities are all eligible uses. We have some stuff out there. The commission has, um, allocated a lot to parks. We've, we've done park restrooms and, uh, playground equipment. Um, there are some stuff in the twenty three CIP, twenty four CIP, twenty five CIP that you could do with these ARPA funds. Um, I know I'm throwing a lot at you and, and not to make any decisions tonight, but some other stuff we've looked at. Road expansion projects, Muncie Road west of Tenth has been talked about for a long time. There's a lot of property on the north side that would open up to residential. Um, if you go past, uh, the existing housing there, um, could also open up some commercial, um, south, on the south side of that. Um, there's road rebuild projects. Um, there's certainly more than these, uh, Lakeview where Culvers is could be, you know, if you send people north there, that's kind of a mess, we Lawrence Road. Muncie west of Fourth Street connecting into that area. Um, these are big projects, uh, multimillion dollar projects, but projects that certainly have been talked about. Expansion of the sewer infrastructure, we would dig into this a little bit. Um, we're, we're pretty good. Works, we're pretty good to the city limits, this would deal with future annexation, just wanted to throw that out there as a possibility. One-time expansion of the annual pavement management program. You could make some sort of token gesture toward pavement management, go from two and a half million to three million for one year. I don't know if that's the most efficient use of funds, but you certainly could do that and just expand. And you could do that with sidewalks, curbing, streets, any program that we already have in place. That's also a good one, if, if we, if we're unable to spend or we can't allocate all the money at the end, we could put this certainly into a pavement management program, so we. The last thing you want to do is return any of the dollars. Retiring old debt, the city is actually in very good financial shape as far as our debt load. We are well below what our capacity, debt capacity is and our debt's in pretty good shape, there's always the opportunity to retire old debt if the city commission wanted staff to further explore that. Community art project, I've seen this for a number of cities that a certain amount is dedicated to a community art project somewhere in the community. For this, as we continue to battle, as everybody does, hiring, recruiting, pilot internship program, bringing on a high school student. End of the fire department per se, and then sending them through the schools and then they become, you know, a pilot program of. We're really looking at bringing in the right people and doing a lot of our own training, that's where I think a lot of the private sector is going, so we could look at something like that. It's expensive because you're paying some level of salary for an employee who's not working for you. And so we don't have that in the budget. Now that's one of those, you know, what's the ongoing cost of that, if you fund it, well, sometimes you see how it works and to see if it's worth funding through the general budget. More improvements along key corridors, I think in a couple weeks, the commission's going to see some ideas from our city planner and assistant city major about a sign consolidation project. Hopefully that wouldn't be super costly, but I just want to throw that out there. Any other improvements along key corridors, we do have the downtown project, but certainly want to make a splash. So the sign recognition thing that we're bringing back to you is all the recognition signs on Fourth Street by Ray Miller. Consolidating those into something that's more aesthetically pleasing and not so scattershot.
Somebody talk to me about that just this past week.
Yeah, we've heard it, so something along those lines. And then again, enhance funding over a two-year period for a specific program, sidewalks, curbs, you could do a cost share, there's a lot of, we do a sidewalk cost share program, we don't have a curb cost share program for people, that, those are options. Couple other just quick pieces of information, this is I think from GFOA or Brookings. Of the money that's been spent to this point by local governments, here's the breakdown of how they've spent it. So I, I don't have this by what size of city they are, so this could be anything from, you know, a Dallas, Texas to a, to a small entity that's, that's spent some of their money, government operations and then. A pretty big logjam right there between eleven and twelve percent for basically everything else. And then the reason public safety is so low is a lot of the CARES Act funding was there and a lot of special grants were available. And a lot of the reason that some of the business stuff isn't in there is because they had access to PPP loans and some other business related loans throughout the pandemic. And most who have survived are back to pre-pandemic levels as far as revenue and, and income.
Mr. Kramer, the community aid piece, what would that encompass?
So mainly nonprofit grants, so United Way, Catholic charities, those type of, those type of opportunities. So I, I did want to leave it, there's, there is time for consideration, there's, there's nothing saying we have to do, spend it all, allocate it all. Right now with the, within the lens of being fully aware that there are deadlines. Everybody's scrambling with this right now, what to do, weighing, how much feedback to get, do you go forward with some projects that you have? So everybody's wrestling with this as they try to expend these funds the best way in the right amount of time. So we do need to start maybe forming consensus around some items, so staff can start working on project scopes, designs, bidding, award, implementation, completion. And then the final thing is, this is just for, to sort of put it all on one page and sort of a graphic. And this would be sort of an estimated idea. The first one is wastewater treatment plant, three million dollars, so that is based on some decent numbers, that's based on a fully rebuilt. And when I, I don't mean repurposed, like literally gutted, new fiberglass walls, new trickling filter. That could last another generation, that would ensure operations go through, this addresses the belt filter press. And then the bar screen, which are the three most critical elements, we believe we can accomplish. And this is hopefully a conservative number for those elements, although not that conservative. We do have some flexibility in the capital reserve in sewer if it does go over, but that's just a placeholder for, for sewer. Certainly the commission could, could adjust that as they saw fit.
Right, I, no, I really, the wastewater treatment plant, yeah, really needs, it's critical for our community.
I really want to see the details, I mean, I appreciate this because that's good, I was like, what's that three million bucks for, I'm like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, to break it down.
I was gonna say that, like, I want to.
No, it's, it's not just a random number, the clarifier works about two point two million. The bar screen work is about a hundred and fifty thousand, that sounds lower, you know, than you would think it is, but that's about what it is. And the rest would depend on if we go back and, you know, hearken back to two items ago, whether you go back with the belt filter press or you invest in a screw press. And so that's kind of the X factor of this three million, we think that's about right, but we'll have to decide, and then do you separate it out of that building, you know, and, and how does that work? So it's a number that's based on the best information we have right now, sure.
Right, just to keep it up to date and keep it running.
And rather, yes, and whether you do the bar screen or go to a, or a belt press or a screw press, you still have to do the clarifier. That is probably the most critical piece, that and the bar screen, so you could even move forward on those and come back. The rest of these are, are plug numbers, we don't know on the Boys and Girls Club, that's a facility, first year operations, I don't know. We've looked at a building, we're still working on that, I wish I was farther along where I could have brought you more information tonight on that, but I think we're moving in the right direction, we have a second meeting coming up. But that's just a plug number at this point.
Just to jump in with you, man, this is a real important time in our community to be able to invest in the youth in our community. I know just serving and with this being my second term, each year I've always heard, we don't have anything for the kids to get involved in. You know, drugs is running rampant, if we don't provide an alternative for these kids, they're going to catch themselves committing crimes, getting in trouble. Just because they feel like there's nothing for them inside of this community that's going to serve and meet their needs. With this funding, I think it's a great opportunity to be able to give back to our kids, let them know like, hey, the city of Leavenworth do care for you, we are here to help you. And the Boys and Girls Club is a great place, they provide life skills training, mentorship. It was something that I wish I had an opportunity to get involved in as a youth. But, you know, now being in this position, I think we're, we're all in a great position to be able to provide this opportunity for the kids.
So Commissioner Wilson, to that point, is there, is there any ways we get closer down this road? Is there any, you know, data you think you can provide for the general public showing communities that implement a program like this? Kind of that impact, you know, what it looks like? Because, I mean, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money and not, you know, there's so much intrinsic value that I'm sure a program like that could, could support. But definitely when we get to that point, I, I think it would be helpful and healthy to, you know, get it out there. So people can, you know, see that how, how much maybe it could potentially impact, you know, Leavenworth.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to get that information, I definitely know it's, it's definitely a return on investment. The teachers at the school even highly, you know, request this, because, you know, I don't know, have anybody visited the schools?
Have you visited the schools?
Yeah, been inside the schools, checked on the, you know, hang out with the kids, the students, teachers.
Yeah, I go, I mean, read and then I, yeah.
And one thing that I hear, the biggest question I hear from the teachers as well, these kids need something to do after school. Because they don't get involved, like, they get involved in the wrong thing. But, yeah, I'd be more than happy to provide.
And you're gonna, I think, Paul Kramer, and you have maybe a meeting with.
Dr. Scott, yep.
Is in charge of what?
And we need to bring him to a commission meeting, and we've only met with him once, so, yeah, he needs to come, he needs to come, he's the, he's the head of the Boys and Girls Club of Kansas City. You know, very, you know, so, yeah, he needs to come and, and come to a study session, talk to the commission.
Yeah, and that's fine, and I know it does great things, but yeah, for, for me not having any children too, you know, I would like to see what the, what it brings to each community.
Well, and I think just, just in general, just as we're, you know, conducting some of these purchases and using funds, I just, I want more and more for everybody to see that lives here, you know. What is this going to mean for us, how's it going to impact us? And maybe it impacts us indirectly, you know, in various ways, but I just, if we can kind of keep doing that, you know, throughout these next several years, just continue to. This is what it means for everybody living here, you know, I just want to keep that message going.
Some of them, it's not just what's it going to do, when's it going to do it, when are we going to see results? You know, let's get a Boys and Girls Club here, somewhere, you know, in, in, in Leavenworth, in the downtown area, even, even better, right? But, okay, once we've got that, when, when can we anticipate seeing drug use going down? Juvenile delinquency going down, you know, people are going to be interested in, people want results right now, you want my money, let me see.
Well, they want to know that it, you know, that it helps, and I think it would, you know, it's, you know, they've been around, I don't know how long the Boys and Girls Clubs have been around.
Over a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, so they're doing, they're doing something.
And with this funding, if we don't use it, we lose it.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
This money is.
But I'd be more than happy to provide.
Yeah, no.
Entire commission, yeah.
Okay.
But let's go for it though.
So we're, we're trying to decide how we could help downtown businesses or businesses in general, we have a business grant program, the city did give out hundreds of, well over quarter million dollars in business grants from CARES Act funding. So I'm open to any other ideas, the reason we picked fire suppression and ADA is because we had some issues with some ADA lawsuits that affected some local businesses. Who are just not equipped to, one, have to hire an attorney and then two, make thousands of dollars of alterations to their building. And so we could do that. Fire suppression systems, I'm certain you've all heard from, from individuals looking to do. Upper story development or even redo some dilapidated or vacant buildings in our community. That the requirement for sprinkler systems or elaborate fire detection systems, we don't have to go that note in the direction, you may have better ideas. But it has to be something that we can execute in eighteen months.
Sure, sure, execute as in allocating funds for it.
Yeah, not, well, allocate but spend, so they have to be spent in eighteen months.
So what was twenty twenty?
We can't just say that we have a five hundred thousand dollar pot for fire suppression and get till the end of twenty twenty-six.
Contract.
No, but the twenty twenty-six date that you threw out there for these funds.
The work has to be completed by.
Yeah, they have to be obligated by twenty-four, so if you're having a program like this, then obligating is the same as spent in that, in that case.
Gotcha, that's what I was kind of following, okay, okay.
So, yeah, so the big number is.
I, I will say to that piece, you know, if there is a way we can, since it would help our, you know, business owners around, I would like to get more of their input. You know, before we would say, hey, we know you want this, I'd like to kind of, you know.
Yeah.
I know we need to hear something quick, because we got to, you know, spend the money, but I would like to hear from how they would like to see what that impact would look like. How, how could we make that happen more as far as getting some feedback, I mean, we can host some open forums and stuff like that, but as far as.
Yeah, if you're looking at the central business district, although they're not all members, Main Street does have the, you know, that we can do that, we could certainly, you know, again, host something here at city hall. You know, you really want the consensus of the downtown rather than what, what one individual business wants.
Oh, no, I totally agree.
And so the, and these were based again on the lawsuits that we had filed through and then just our building and codes department fielding, building inquiries over the last couple of years. Plus also feedback from Main Street and building owners that these guys, but certainly open to other ideas, okay, okay. City Hall Conference of Plumbing and Piping Replacement Project, we'd be happy to take you on a tour of the basement here and show you the pipes of this building. Relocation, and, and that is based on a bid, that number, that's not just a plug number, we do have a bid number for that, we got that ready for the CIP. Relocation and creation of the Parks and Recreation Central Office, that's also based on a bid. And so we were looking at the south wing of the community center, we only have one group that's still in there, we would work obviously with them, we have other meeting space. It has its own separate interests, Leavenworth Parks and Recreation with the reception area, happy to tour you through that, that. And that is also based on a, a bid number, so that's something we could turn around pretty quickly.
What would we do with the room that they, the rooms, small though.
Where they're downstairs?
Yeah, where they are.
Yeah, so the, a lot of the seasonal decorations and wedding decorations are stored in, what's the attic? And so it's, it's really cramped down there, so they would be able to much better organize the stuff that they use, whether it's Christmas parties or weddings or stuff throughout those, those things. So happy to bring more information back on any of these, just wanted to throw these out there. Energy sustainability or efficiency, it doesn't have to be anything specific, but we put some of those in there if you wanted to look at, again, because it was in the comp plan and, because we've had those discussions. And then other, I used four plug ones that I spoke about. If, if housing is something that we don't think we can turn around, that obviously opens up some dollars, I, I certainly didn't want to obligate it to commission anything, but these were items that had come from conversations, commission goals. And known entities from the city, so I throw it out there for a discussion, a further discussion going forward. If we did want to really focus in the next sixty to ninety days on some stuff related to the wastewater treatment plant, we could certainly start moving forward on that. And then any direction, of course, that the commission wants to go.
I know this is a small one, but I mean, with the, you know, the trails that we just, you know, went ahead and approved, the extension of that one trail. We maybe get with Parks and Recs and see if, I can't remember how much those other two trails cost, do you remember?
They were all designed to be thirty thousand dollars, because that was the allocation.
I still want to see the full comprehensive plan for the city actually before I.
Right, well, I'm throwing this out there, so, because I want Parks and Recs to do a breakdown of what they really need, and I was looking at Cody Park too. What the cost is on replacing some of that, that they looked at that ball field, I don't know if it was the lighting, tennis court or something like that.
Pickleball court is what's wanted.
Pickleball.
But, no, I want a breakdown of it, that's all I'm asking.
I appreciate all the work you put into this, Mr. Kramer, because I know this is a lot, kind of getting everything all sorted out and figured out, and that takes a while to put all that together, so I appreciate you breaking it down like that.
Yeah, I do too.
I will say, I'm definitely not ready to move forward on a consensus as far as I'm concerned right now, definitely, the wastewater treatment plant is high priority, I think for me. I would like to just get more details around that and understand more of the lifecycle piece and from a strategic standpoint, how we can, you know, use those funds possibly. So that's kind of my biggest unknown right now, but I appreciate you putting that estimate out there.
I'm definitely looking forward to the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, and I'm definitely looking forward to more information.
I got you.
No, yeah, of course, yeah, number one priority, which I already said, is wastewater treatment plant, that was sort of on one of my things I wanted to take care of. Yeah, more on the Boys and Girls Club, love to have that gentleman come in and talk to us and all these others, you know, if, if there's just even, huh? Oh.
I think you should.
And then, yeah, Parks and Recs, and I'm always for, that's my big things with the street, street maintenance, if we can do with the sidewalk or curb. ADA complaints. Yeah, this is a good.
Yeah, certainly not looking for any kind of, you know, this is just a framework to start thinking, this is what a lot of, a lot of cities are doing right now, there's a lot of discussions.
Nancy has to say too.
So I guess how soon do you need a decision?
So I think our, our marching orders are to start working on more defined information and costs and process for the wastewater treatment plant. And then I think we've talked about the information that we want to get, some more feedback from the businesses on some of the business aspects, some more information related to the Boys and Girls Club.
I mean, yeah, that, that right there, it's over fifty percent, you know, the funds right, right in there, so.
Yeah.
Let's get it.
Okay, is that it? Anyone else have any questions?
I think so, I'm going to have them when I drive away tonight, I'm sure. That's all right, it's already team.
I usually get them when I'm sleeping and then it's like, oh.
Maybe we can put these on, you know, some future agendas, just on and off to keep the forefront, I'd like to.
I think we'll put it back pretty soon on it, just another study session, just have a discussion. We'll hear what you've heard, you know, as this gets out.
Okay, so if that's it, does anyone else have any thing they want to bring up, Mr. Kramer?
I do, I want to talk about, quickly about mowing, so.
Oh, yeah.
So the city lets mowing contracts in two separate, for two separate functions. The first one is Parks and Recreation, so our Parks crew, which is not as large as you'd think, you know, six to eight, they do the majority of the parks, but we use, we do use contractors for different, different parks throughout the city. That contractor, we bidded, awarded, that's going well. The second thing is done by the planning and community development department, and that has two aspects. One is city clusters, so these are parcels that the city has, has come to own for some reason or another, we could have bought it at a tax. We could have bought it at a tax sale ten years ago. We did that at one point. Um, I don't, not sure why, but we did. And so we continue to mow those. So we have a, a set number of city clusters. That also includes some areas that we have purchased for stormwater. We have, we did have to mow along, you know, the creek bank to, to some level. The second one that's more volatile is code enforcement properties. These are not city properties, but I think the public gets accustomed to the being mowed, um, which we do, and then we charge the property owner. The contractor who had the city cluster and the code enforcement, I won't go too far into details, had, uh, a huge, had theft with his equipment, um, and, uh, a big turnover of his staff, and he, and he, uh, withdrew from the contract at the last minute. By this point, most of the mow contractors have their year set. And so we put it back out to bid and we didn't get any responses, um, on the code side. On the city cluster, we did, and you'll see that next week at the city commission. So what are we going to do on the coast side? I'll tell you why nobody wants the code mowings or why they're more difficult. Um, it varies. We've had, on the very low end, eight properties in a week, and on the very high end, sixty properties in a week.
Wow, sixty.
It just depends on, um, the code, the code enforcement officers out in the community. It's also yards, properties that are not city properties, that the, that's private property, that people don't want us to mow, because we're, they're being charged for it. They don't know who's mowing it, so, um, it can be a little contentious. You have to take before and after photos, because these are subject to court proceedings at some point. Uh, you have to have insurance, because you're a city contractor, so if you hit something and it shoots a rock through the window, you have to have insurance. And so it's not as, um, could we have gotten somebody had we known the, the contractor? Probably, but this late in the game. Um, so we called, we started calling mowers that we've used before to see if they would take up to ten a week. If we could get four mowers who take ten a week, that's tough for us, because it's contract management, and we have to go out to each of the properties and make sure that they've done it, make sure that they didn't blow the grass out into the street. There's a lot that goes into that. Keep in mind, these are not city properties. These are properties that individual property owners have elected for, for no reason or not, to not mow and blight the neighborhoods. So that is the update. Uh, we're working on it. City cluster's next week, and we think we have four mowers signed up for code enforcement, and they should maybe restart mowing those, uh, early next week. So, um, there's the, there's an update on that. Happy to answer any questions you have.
How many code enforcement officers do we have?
We have three, and the city's broken into three districts based on, uh, population. And so, um, as I said, at the height of growing season, um, we could have sixty, uh, properties on the code enforcement list for, for mowing. And that's grass over twelve inches.
Is that just, uh, is that just landscaping kind of codes or those guys go out and they look for anything, building codes and everything else?
Right, code enforcement is all property maintenance, so that's in this time, uh, usually vet, weed, vegetation, uh, but then it's also property maintenance standards.
So the contractor, when they cut the grass, they just build the city whatever, or is there a second?
So it's a set amount. It's based on square footage, um, and so that's also part of the calculation. We do all that through the bid process in the spring, so now, now we have to get back into, to the most. And you're right, now some of those are twenty inches tall, and that's hard on equipment and machinery. So, um, it put us in a bit of a bind. Um, it hasn't happened very often. We usually have pretty good. We do a lot of vetting with our contractors, show us your equipment list, show us your employee list. This was just sort of an unfortunate thing for this, uh, this mow contractor.
Yeah, that's one of the common, I would think.
It's a little off the, off the subject, but has the police department, have they done anything to find this guy's stuff?
I think they located a trailer. I don't know about the equipment yet.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
No, that's good. Yeah, questions, thanks for having us.
Can I show you, did you have anything?
Yes.
Did you have anything?
No.
No?
Well, I'm just excited just, uh, you know, to have this discussion, have the ARPA funding available. Uh, definitely looking forward to continue the, the discussion with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, Commissioner Martin, some information as well as the other commissioners.
Yep.
Uh, but other than that, man, God bless and have a great week.
Okay, Commissioner Martin.
Definitely, you never know. There's a lot of, uh, opportunity for young entrepreneurs that want to get into, uh, mowing on, on the side, so. That's all I got.
Okay, no, great, steady se- uh, session. I was really excited about tonight, so we'll see what happens in the future, so. That's it. Everyone have a great evening.